All right, we'll start with Mr. Castellanos. First, identify yourself, the office you're running for, and whether you're an incumbent or a challenger.
First off, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's really wonderful to be out and introducing ourselves and candidates and everyone showing up to learn about everyone's platforms. So I'm Brian Castellanos. I am a second-term Lynn School Committee member. I am a Lynn Public School product. I am a product of first-generation low-income background. I come from nothing. Being able to be here in the minority cultural center kind of hits home for me as an immigrant. I came to this country when I was three years old from Venezuela. I became a U.S. citizen when I was 14 years old, so I've been an underdog my whole life. When we talk about this city and the students and the families that I get to work for and serve, it's been an honor. I've been humbled during this last term as we just went through a pandemic. I really, I take a lot of pride in engaging with the families and students that I work for. The priorities that you lay out are my priorities. The voices get to the table. No matter what the concerns are, I know we have a few minutes and low time to talk about our platforms, but one of my major platforms that I've been fighting for over the last four years has been about social-emotional learning, trauma-informed practices, and really engaging our parents and our most vulnerable students who really suffer. And I come from a broken home, so I lived the experiences when we talk about food insecurities and housing insecurities. So I take it very personal. My constituents are my family. I work for you just like I work for my family. Retention is another outline of a platform that we need to address and capital improvement to address the overcrowding and really, really hitting it hard on the ground every day. Every day, every day matters for our students and the families that we serve. It's dedication and commitment that I'm here for. I play no games. I'm right up front. You have an issue, you can call me at 781-346-2087.
It's always a tough act to follow that, Brian, but I'll try. I'll do my best. My name's Eric Dugan. I'm running for school committee. I'm running for school committee for two reasons. First reason, I'm a parent. My oldest son just graduated Lynn Classical in the spring. He's off in college. Tyler, we're really proud of him. He's playing soccer. We're psyched. He's doing very, very well. Product of Lynn Public Schools. My younger son's going to be a junior at Classical, so I'm a parent. I have a horse in the race. I think that's really important. But also, I'm a teacher. Been an educator for 20 years in Danvers. So I'm well-versed in education, current trends, best practices, all the important things with curriculum. In terms of education, I've done it all. I've been on hiring committees, I've gotten principals in my building, staff, other teachers. I've handled administrative duties. I've negotiated contracts between the Teachers Union in Danvers and the Danvers School Committee, so I can bring a value to the school committee, I believe, that I can bring to the table. I think Brian touched on a lot of the issues that I also agree with. Social-emotional learning is really important. The overcrowding in our buildings also is really important for our students. It's not fair to the students. It's not fair to the teachers. So that's something that needs to be addressed. One of the ways that we can do that is the Student Opportunity Act. We have lots of federal and state money coming in. We're very fortunate for that. But I think with joining the school committee, one of my biggest jobs is going to be oversight of that money. Making sure that money is funneled into the proper places to address the issues that Brian and I have both discussed up here. Making sure that we're hiring, and Lynn has done that. Hired lots of guidance councils and social workers this year, but there's more to do. And there's more money coming in. So we're in a place of transition, and I want to be a part of that. I want to be a part of bringing the schools forward. And all that money that's coming in is going to be a big key to that. And so oversight of the school committee is going to be really, really important. So hopefully on September 14th, and again on November 2nd, I can get one of your six votes. Thank you.
Mr. Castellanos, what is the most pressing issue facing Lynn Public Schools today, in your opinion? And what would you do to rectify it?
I feel like this is like Shark Tank. Two minutes? All right, so, like I said, social-emotional learning is, we're in a transition right now. We have a lot of money coming in from state. We need to really leverage the Student Opportunity Act and really be strategic and focused on establishing the right strategic position to spend that money. And that means gathering input from the community, not just throwing money out on programs. Actually bringing the community together, bringing all the stakeholders together. Because together, we can achieve more. And that's how we're going to achieve transparency within the process. SEL is not just a buzzword for me. I live and die with my constituents. I see the trauma. I'm in these homes every day. When it comes to an IEP, I attend meetings with my constituents. If you have a disability, any type of learning, any type of situation that comes about, I'm here to problem solve. I don't just sit around and kick the can. I'm not that type of person. I have never been that type of person. And I have always led with action. And I believe the social-emotional learning evolution that we're in right now needs to be taken very seriously because mental health is a top priority. Coming from a pandemic, there was so much just adversity that this city went through in trauma, through racial trauma, through the social-emotional longevity of what we went through as a community. We have the new goals that we set with the superintendent, and it's stabilize, heal, and transform. So when we talk about, you know, when folks, politicians talk about these bold ideas, we actually have key indicators and measurables. Like we're taking strategic actions. So I'm up here, unfortunately, I don't have enough time to break down every initiative, but we're looking at every indicator and we're holding the district accountable. I'm calling Dr. Topwiler every day. I'm calling the curriculum department every day. Every day, I'm calling in to check in on your money. So every single day, I am making it a known fact. You cannot just kick the can, not me, not for my constituents. Like I said, I treat you like family, and that's what you get. It's not just like, I'm passionate. You can imagine what I do when, no, I'm out there, so I am who I am. And I also have a master's degree. I'm a licensed social worker. I hold a bachelor's degree. I've been in public service for the last eight years. I have a lot of experience, so, thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Brian.
Same thing?
Yes.
Again, tough act to follow that.
What is the most pressing issue that you feel the Lynn Public Schools are facing? And what would you do to rectify that issue?
Okay, so obviously the buildings, you know, that's the obvious answer. But that's a team effort, you know, that's the school committee, that's the council, that's the mayor's office. So I think, you know, if I am to hopefully be elected onto the school committee, making sure that process is worked through, working with the MSBA is going to be a really important part of that. You know, it seems like some legislations going through. Lynn's going to be able to get back to the table, which is really, really important. But that's a team issue. I think in terms of just the school committee, it's going to be the overcrowding in the buildings. You know, one of the complaints, my son Ryan, when he comes home every day, is, you know, in between classes. And it's already started this week, in between classes, you know, he's bumping elbows with everybody at Classical. And English, you know, you have that addition in the parking lot where kids are learning in the parking lot, literally learning in the parking lot. So that's an issue that, you know, really needs to be addressed. Third-Grd. Marshall is overcrowded already. Pickering, obviously, everybody knows what's going on there. So that's an issue that needs to be addressed. And one way we can do it again is with that money that's coming in. I think the biggest part of the school committee moving forward is going to be addressing that money and making sure it's earmarked in the appropriate places. Again, making sure that it's going to the right channels, moving in the right places, so that we can deal with the issues that are facing our students. Because it's not fair to our students that they need to, you know, sit in classes of 32 kids. It's not fair to the teachers if, you know, that they're teaching these large classes. You know, the teachers are overworked, the students are feeling it, and we need to address that. So that's what I believe is the biggest issue.
Kenny Castellanos, you have one minute for your closing statement.
So I want to share a quote. I love quotes. I'm big on, you know, self-talk and just battling through life. Because life is hard, growing up, blue-collar working. I still, I bought my home in Westland. I'm a homeowner in Lynn. I came from a rough situation where I have faced food insecurities and housing insecurities. So I come from a lived experience. And the quote I want to share, it's "It's the children the world almost breaks who grow up to save it." From Frank Warren. Every day, I dedicate myself for a living. My mission is to protect children from child abuse and neglect. I'm a regional missionary absence specialist where I look to save our most vulnerable kids from exploitation in many directions, so I see the worst of humanity. And every day, I make it my mandatory mission to fight for our children, to fight for the most vulnerable out there without lip service. I take action with everything I put on the table. I always match it with the measurables. Because I believe in, you got to have a direction, you got to have a focus, you got to have an aim. I have a high RPA self-improvement every day. Yeah, I take a lot of passion to that. And I'll be honored to get one of your votes for the primary for the third term. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dugan, one minute for your closing statement.
Okay, so I like to live by being a person of value. And I think I can be a valuable asset to the school committee with my experience in education, with my experience in the Lynn community. One thing I didn't mention is I've done a ton of coaching in the Lynn community. I was president of the YAML Little League for a couple of years. While I was there, I was able to upgrade many of the fields, the Great Woods Road softball field. I was instrumental in getting new fencing all around there. So I've got the experience in the community. I've got the background in education. And I really feel I can be a value of the committee if I'm elected. So again, on Tuesday, September, it's coming up, Tuesday, September 14th and November 2nd, please consider Eric Dugan for one of your six votes for Lynn School Committee. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. We're going to take the next two.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, I don't see Paul or Gayley here this evening, right? And I did get a call from Lorraine Gayley. She did have a family illness, so she's not going to be here. But she did want people to know that. She really did want to attend. So now I want to go with Lopez and Magnolia.
Sandra Lopez, I hope she's here.
Penya. Okay, we'll go with ladies first. Ms. Magnolia. All right, identify yourself, the office you're running for, and whether or not you're an incumbent or a challenger.
Thank you very much. My name is Tiffany Magnolia. I am running for school committee. I am not a current member of school committee. This is the second time that I have run. I am a professor of English at North Shore Community College. I also run our honors program there. I am a parent of an elementary school student here in Lynn. I am a board member of several nonprofits here in Lynn. I am a homeowner. And I am also passionate about education. I have been an education activist since my undergraduate days, where I was deeply invested in a project called the Coalition of Essential Schools, which was really about experiential education in terms of how it can turn around the achievement gap, specifically in schools that are low-income, high-minority rates, or English as a second language ratios high. Now, I did not become a secondary education teacher, which is what I thought I was going to do when I was an undergraduate. Instead, I find myself at the community college level teaching students. But one of the reasons that I am running for school committee is because I love education and I see the transformative effect that it can have every day with my students, who are often products of the Lynn Public Schools. So I would ask for one of your six votes because I understand education through and through, and I also bring the perspective of a parent in addition. Thank you.
Well, first and foremost, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you, CMCC, for having us here. And it's very vital for our community to be informed, and I am so grateful to be here. My name is Lenny Penya. I am a candidate for school committee. I currently am a homeowner. I have a beautiful family. We reside at 59 Angle Street in East Lynn. We have three small children in the Lynn Public School system. I am an employee in the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission, so if you see flies out there, I'm probably out there. When it rains, of course, I'm out there, you know, working. And I also am a youth coordinator at the Lynn YMCA. I coordinate activities with the youth there. I've been volunteering with youth football over 12 years. I am the director of football for the Outlaws Football Program, and I am co-founder of NEYT. That's New Angle Youth Football Tackle. I have three children, three older children that went through the Lynn Public School system. I went through the Lynn Public School system myself. My oldest daughter graduated from Lynn Classical. She graduated from Sable State. And I love kids. I love giving back. One of the two main reasons I'm running for school committee is I like to be a voice for those. Because I remember when I had two chill, my two older boys, we had IEPs. And I would go to advocate for help for my children. And we would have a meeting, to have another meeting, to have another meeting, to end up back in the same circle, right where I was. And it's not the educators' fault. I think there needs to be a change in the administration to make sure that everyone's accountable, that our children are getting the services that they need. You know, and I'm big on the social and emotional learning. Because when you don't address the social and emotional learning, what happens? It becomes a discipline problem. And then Inspector Larry, and you guys, we all know the story. So those are the things that I want to run on. And make sure that we have a communication, making sure that our people, our families and our children are getting a voice, getting the needs, the help that they need.
All right, Ms. Magnolia, what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing Lynn Public Schools today? And how would you rectify that issue?
So I think that's kind of a trick question because there's two things that are connected. The first is that we have a system that actively disenfranchises families. It's very hard to make your voice heard as a regular person unless you know someone on the school committee or you understand how to access folks on the school committee. So I think it's really important to think systemically. How do we build new systems that bring people into the conversations about what they want their kids to learn, about how they want the schools to operate, about all of that stuff, that's the quality of life for our kids who spend six, seven hours a day in these buildings? That's more of their life sometimes than outside of these buildings. And that is directly connected to what I see as a disconnect between the folks who work for Lynn Public Schools and the community they serve. Okay, so we have built a system in which the 85% majority folks who are working for the Lynn Public Schools are white, and over 85% of the folks they are serving are not. Now, representation matters. And I think that this is sort of baked into the cake right now, so we need to look at how we are actively disenfranchising people from entering the Lynn Public School system as employees who are not that 85% white. We have to make a concerted effort to make sure there is language representation, that there is race representation, that there is country of origin representation, and that there is ability representation. We have kids on IEPs, and we have folks who would probably jump at the chance to have a job, but they walk with crutches. Those people in classrooms inspire children. And we need to be deliberative about hiring folks that represent the community, even so much as maybe starting in eighth grade with a cohort of students and teaching them what it means to be a teacher someday. Making sure our paras have a profession ladder if they are the ones that are starting from the community in our schools. So those two things together, thinking systemically about how we change a structural problem that is keeping folks out. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Penya, the most pressing issue you feel is facing Lynn Schools today? And how would you rectify that?
Well, I agree with Tiffany, the lack of representation, and that is true. But for me, I think the social and emotional learning. We just came off one of the worst times that we all went through. We came off of COVID. COVID exposed a lot of inepties in our school system, in our cities. But we pulled together. We came through. You know, our kids, our children were affected emotionally, mentally, and physically. And it's very important that we work, and our teachers too. We need to really make sure we have, and the school committee now, they're working place. We have a lot of money coming in, and we need to really focus and channel in the social-emotional learning. It's very important. You know, we have kids that were affected, you know, especially, you know, the uncertainty of what's going on. Even still, you know, we need to really work. And I feel that we need to work with other nonprofits that are out there. You know, because I'm telling you, I worked at the Y, and I seen a lot of our kids, like, had nothing to do. Parents were put in a bad place, and you have essential workers that had to still go out there and work. You know, and we need to work with these nonprofits having activities. Like, we found out we're really behind on technology. We need to really do something. We need some action now, and that's why I'm here. I'm here as a voice, as a parent, you know, and I saw what happened to our kids. I seen it at my house, and I seen what happened to our kids, the kids I coached, the kids I work with at the Y, you know, and it's something that needs to be addressed. It's very, very important, you know. And, you know, even our teachers were affected with this COVID. And we need to, we need something, we need some, you know, we need to recover from this, and we need to do it together. You know, thank you.
Okay, you have, Ms. Magnolia, one minute for your closing statement.
So thank you so much to the Cultural Minority Center here. I just want to say that Lynn is my community by adoption. I didn't grow up here, but I've been here almost 20 years now, and I love this place. And I love it so much that my daughter thinks of herself as a Linner through and through and has absolutely no qualms about saying when we go down south of Boston, which is where my in-laws live, "I'm from Lynn." And so I want to represent our city, not from the, "I know everything there is to know because I grew up here," but from the, "I have taken this place as my home, and I am so proud to say that." I hope to represent you on the school committee as a parent, as an educator myself. I am number one on the ballot for the primary, and then make sure you vote in November. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Penya, one minute.
Yes, so we have 17,000 students in the city of Lynn. 86% of them are people of color. 75% Latino. We do lack representation in the school. I like to be a voice for all. You know, it's very important for people and students to see people that reflect the community, you know. 90% of the teachers are not people of color. And I'm not saying I'm against educators that are not of color. What I'm saying is, we need to do better. I like to be a voice. I like to be a representative, a voice for all. So on September 14th and November 2nd, I ask, please, Donald, not Mr. Walter, give me your vote, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have one more candidate for a school committee, Daniel Richard. Daniel will have the stage to yourself. We try to pair people up, but all eyes on you. Okay, first identify yourself, the office you are running for, and whether or not you're an incumbent or a challenger.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Richard. I want to say first and foremost, thank you to the CMCC, Mr. Darryl Murkison, for putting this on. I really appreciate it. So I am running for school committee. Once again, my name is Daniel Richard. I'm a lifelong Lynn kid. I grew up in Ward 6, right on Hood Street, right behind Druids Elementary. I went to Druids. I went to Breed. I graduated Classical 2008. So I have the experience of being a student of the school, but also too, I have a child who's 13 and special needs and was in the coach program at Shoemaker. So I do have the perspective of being a student, but I also have the perspective of being a parent. But not just any kind of parent. When my son was here at the Shoemaker School, once again, he has special needs. He is autistic. So I do understand the importance of advocating for your child and really fighting for the services that kids need. I remember showing up to my first IEP meeting with all of their teachers, and I sat down. I said, "I can be a very nice guy, but if I don't like what I hear, I can be a very mean guy." So that's, those are the kind of things that you need to do when you advocate for kids with special needs. Because if you don't advocate for them, you are their voice. They cannot advocate for themselves. So it's a very big, very, very big important part to me as far as my platform goes. I'm a homeowner in Lynn as well. Once again, I lived in Lynn 31 years, and I don't plan on going anywhere else. This is my home, and I know I can bring a lot of different perspectives to the Lynn School Committee from a student perspective and from a parent's perspective. Thank you.
All right, what do you feel is the most pressing issue facing Lynn Public Schools? And what would you do to rectify that issue?
Absolutely. So, being an immigrant as well, being a Latino from Colombia, I understand ESL programs is very important, but the special needs program is very important as well. Once again, advocating and making sure to bring in outside resources, for example, like the Northeast Ark, they always have great programs. Bringing outside programs to parents, because what I understand and what I know about ESL and special needs is it doesn't stop when the child leaves school. You have to advocate for kids outside of school, and kids need services in their home. I can tell you firsthand, my son was here in July, and him not having services was very stressful. I had to spend all day, every single day with him 24/7. And not having services can be stressful at times. So making sure that parents understand and know where to go to get resources, know where to go get services outside of school because it's a 24/7, 365 job when it comes to ESL kids. And you need to advocate for their kids, not just in school, but outside of school as well. Because those programs are not just going to come knocking on your door. And I know that I can maneuver through the program. And once again, I went through the whole process myself, and it is a little complicated. I remember going through his testing downtown. Then I had to go to Bennett Street to get him enrolled. Then I had to go to the New Tech building to make sure he was in school, and then we shipped him over to Shoemaker. So it's very troublesome. It's very cumbersome. And if you're not aware of how to maneuver through that, it can be very hard and it can be very stressful. And if I get onto the school committee, I know I can help all the parents in the school, in the school department to make sure that they're not voices being heard, but also too, that their kids are going to be advocated for and that they can have somebody that they can call 24/7, and I will pick up that phone to make sure that child gets the services they need.
So moving right along, you have one minute for your closing statement to let people know why they should vote for you for a school committee.
Why I feel they should vote for me for school committee is I'm very, very intense. I am very, very, I feel very strong about kids. I have one kid myself, as you know. I'm looking forward to having other kids myself. But I don't know the meaning of quit. I don't mean, I don't know the meaning of stop. So I will fight for your kids as if they were my own kids. And I will continue to call. I will call Dr. Topwiler. I'll call anybody that I need to to make sure that that kid is getting the proper services, making sure that that kid and that family's voice is being heard. I've already been getting phone calls and emails about traffic and their kids not being signed up, or, you know, it's hard to get to school, or we're not really sure. I will be that person that picks up that calls and make sure that they get their answers right away. And it's very important that representation is on the board. Once again, being a young Latino, that definitely plays a role because I think we do need more diversity, not just on the school committee, but in our school systems as well. Thank you.
All right, candidate for the Lynn School Committee. You are now going to have the ward conference. Ward 1 is unopposed. The council of Ward 1 is Wayne Lozen. In Ward 2, Elizabeth Figueroa. And Rick Starbuck. And Rick Starbuck, this and his regrets as well. I don't see Elizabeth Thiero either.
She had a family emergency.
She had a family emergency as well. Okay. Okay. So, that's Ward One and Ward Two. Ward Three, I believe we have three candidates for Ward Three. We are going to take again in alphabetical order. That will be Coco and Sling. Is that correct, Coco?
I will explain.
Miguel Funes. He's not here, so. Oh, I have the old list, I'm sorry. Oh, my apologies, folks, my apologies. Because everyone didn't sign in, so I'm just going by the list that I have here. There are some people out here that are not signing.
I guess just me.
Just you?
Hi, everyone.
What a great.
Repeat after me.
Let me just say this also, excuse me Coco, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I have to get this in just really quickly. Uh, for the school committee, again, just reiterate that there was some regrets. Lorraine Gately and also Donnycobola sent her regrets as well. You're good.
Okay, repeat after me. Ah? Lynn? City of Lynn? Sue. Alan Sue. And that goes to you too, candidate, because I've been, I've been told so many times, ass, ling ling, song song, a lot of times. Do it again. Ah? Lynn? Sue? Thank you very much, you passed.
My name is Coco Alan Sue. Um, I was born and raised in the Philippines. Um, I have a very colorful life. I could have stayed in the Philippines and had a beautiful career. Uh, I came from a, a good family, but I left the country because, um, I want to live my life freely, honestly, and live by myself as a gay man. Um, I could not be as, as gay, um, in the Philippines because of a lot of reasons. So, I came here in 1996. As many immigrants, there's a lot of challenges, but I overcome those challenges and I moved to Lynn in, uh, 19 years ago and met my husband now. So, I found my, the love of my life and I'm a very happy guy. And when I moved here 19 years ago, the first thing I did was volunteer at the Goldfish Pan Association in Ward Three. I, I'm a community guy, I just enjoy doing a lot of community work. Um, so after being involved with Goldfish Pan, I've been doing a lot of, um, organizations in Lynn. I could not, would not mention them. Um, but the, doing that, it's just natural for me to be interacting with people and doing work with the city I love. Um, I'm also a vaccine researcher, so if you raise your hand, if you have your vaccine done, I would appreciate it and be very happy. Thank you very much. I'm one of the 10 people who actually, uh, part of the protocol team of the Moderna COVID-19 vaccine. So, if you had Moderna, people called Madonna, then I'm one of those 10 guys who actually did a lot of sleepless nights just to push through with, with the study so that all of us will have that vaccine and the whole world is enjoying that vaccine. So, I'm, I'm doing, um, I'm doing, um, community health. So, I travel the world and go to Africa, Europe to find vaccines for HIV. So, when COVID came, we had to drop everything and it says stop. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Coco, what do you think is the most pressing issue in Ward Three and how would you rectify that issue?
So, I would like to acknowledge my, uh, my friend Karen, who's there, who's from Ward Three and a neighbor. Uh, when I made my decision to run for Ward Three, I called all my neighbors and friends and everybody that lives in Ward Three. We sat down, we talked, we had good food, uh, we had good conversations. Prior to that, we have a lot of Zoom calls and I just listen. I've always been a team player. I, I listen to my neighbors and ask, uh, what are the problems in the ward? And you've noticed as you go from precincts one, two, three, four, they have different, um, issues and problems. From traffic lights, from trash, um, and so on and so forth. One thing that I'm so proud of, because I have inputs coming from them. So, I feel like my run is not only my run alone, but a run for, run together with my neighbors. If you pick one, um, it's, it's the, uh, the smell and the stench at, uh, Gaines Beach in, uh, Lynn Beach. We were just there today and, you know, we were holding signs with, again, my neighbors and friends. And believe it or not, a lot of my neighbors across the street where we were holding signs, they got out of their house and just talked with me and reiterated their problems. So, one thing I will tell them though is after the elections, I will sit down with, if, if the tide of, of success will go to, to me, I will need to sit down and continue that conversation, because I don't want to reinvent the wheel. I know Councilor Seer had a lot of conversations with neighbors. I know there's also a task force created by Representative, uh, Rep, Office of State Reps, um, Lori Elrick, uh, Ehrlich and, and Senator Brendan Kaiten. We need to sit down, state representative, city council and the neighborhood associations to continue that conversation, because at the end of the day, I am a team player, I need input from everyone and that's the success of whatever we're going through from one problem to the other. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Thank you for that answer, Coco. You have, uh, one minute to make your closing statement, why they should elect you to Ward Three City Council.
You need to elect me. I don't have kids. I have all the time, I work from home. Um, if you call me, I'm there. Um, I'm honest to goodness answer. Um, win or lose, you will still see me doing, doing things I love in Lynn. Probably hosting a lot of events here, raising the pride flag, City Hall, uh, approving grants for people who would like to apply for grants for the Lynn Cultural Council, attending meetings and doing programming for Lynn Community Television. The, the list goes on and on and on and on. I love doing community work, so being a city councillor is just an addition of what I originally loved. So, vote for me September 14th and November 2nd. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Coco.
All right, folks may be wondering why, um, the Ward Three City Councillor is not here on the platform. For those people that don't know, the Ward Three City Councillor is here, but he's running for mayor. Darren Seer, recognize yourself. All right, so Ward Three was represented, but Coco's a challenger with some others, but Darren has represented Ward Three. Okay, we're going on to Ward Four right now. We have Rich Calucci, Natasha Meggi Madre. Okay, we will go in alphabetical order, so it will be Councillor Calucci. Please identify yourself, the office you are running for and whether or not you're an incumbent or a challenger.
Hi, I'm Rich Calucci. I'm the incumbent Ward Four. Thanks for having me, folks. I have some, uh, I see some of my high school friends in the back there. I grew up in Lynn my whole life. I, uh, worked hard in Lynn, I had a thesis in Lynn, I sell real estate in Lynn, and I do a lot in Lynn. And I want you guys to know, if you support me, I won't let you down. Thank you.
Mr. Meggi Madre, identify yourself.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you for putting on this forum. Everybody who had a hand in it, I know putting on these forums are really a lot of work. It takes a lot of volunteers and everybody in the background. Anybody who had a hand in this, I want to say thank you. And to the people who are here and the people who are watching on TV, I think it's great that you want to be an informed voter, it's really, really important. So, my name is Natasha, I'm Ashi Madre. I'm running for city council in Ward Four, because we need change. Um, I can't say in any other simple way. Um, I've lived in Lynn, so let me just start by telling you that I'm not from Lynn. I've been in Lynn for 23 years. Um, I grew up in Dorchester. I was the first in my family to go to college. Um, I worked really, really hard. Um, after going to college, I went to law school. I went to law school because I wanted to help people. And I know that's what all lawyers say, but this is really in my heart to, to bring that to the table and to be able to help other people. Um, I moved to Lynn after, after, after college, because it was too expensive to live in Dorchester anymore. So, I moved to Lynn and, um, and I've been raising my family here ever since and it's been 23 years. I love the city, um, and it's changed over the last 23 years. Um, and I think it's changed for the veteran. I think that, um, Lynn is a great city, but when you look at our representatives, it's not representative of the city. So, we need to have more diversity, we need more representation, we need everybody to have a voice. Every single voice matters. This is why I'm running for office, because it is so important that the little kids that are growing up in Lynn now, they see that we can make a difference and we can run for office and we can do whatever we want. And that's what I tell my kids and that's what I want all the kids in Lynn to believe. And that is why I'm running for office. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Calucci, what do you think is the most pressing issue facing the Ward Board residents? And what would you do to rectify that issue?
I think it's, a lot of it's, uh, housing, trash in the neighborhoods and taxes. I want, I want you guys to know, uh, years ago, on Herbert Street, it was a dilapidated building. The police didn't want to go, they were so bad. I talked to, then, God bless this old Chip McClancy, uh, he agreed to give us $150,000. Now, that is a pristine property right under the Carter Harvard and Hamilton. The housing authority bought it and know what? Affordable housing for the, for the eight units. Right on Union Street. Drug-infested Union Street, Carter, Union and Pinkham. Richie Calucci had some buildings gone down and now there's eight affordable housing units. 700 Washington Street. A drug-infested, rat-infested lot with weed, with rats. The, the parking department owned it. I convinced the seller to, uh, housing authority. Now, there's 71 units, 63 of affordable housing. So, I'm doing my work, I'm doing what I have to do and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
So, same question, what do you think is the most pressing issue facing Ward Four residents and what would you do?
Absolutely. So, first of all, there are many issues facing Ward Four. My, it's really hard to pick just one. Um, I would say my top priority is housing, right? Affordable housing, we need more affordable housing. Because for me, I just think of my 22-year-old daughter who can't find an apartment because it is ridiculously priced. Um, and it's great to talk about, you know, the past and, um, several, eight units is not going to do anything for the amount of people who need housing. We need a lot of housing. We need, people need places to live and it needs to be affordable. Uh, we're being priced out. So, if you look around, a lot of you might not be here in a few years because the prices are so high. And you have to think about your kids. Will they be able to buy a home in Lynn? Because the prices are ridiculous. We need to have more programs for young adults to become homeowners. This is the only way we're going to build generational wealth. That is what we need to do for our young adults. And that is how they're going to stay here and stay vested in Lynn. Another problem that I really see is voting. Voting is a huge issue in Ward Four. Now, when I ran in 2019, only 12% of registered voters in Ward Four voted. Now, I'll tell you again one more time, just so you can remember, 12%. We need to do better than 12%. If 100% of people voted, I would be happy, because then I would say, okay, well, the people decided. But I am not okay with 12% of people deciding anything. It's just not okay. You cannot be doing such a great job if only 12% of your ward is voting. I am sorry, but we need to make it easier for people to vote. When I talked to one person, um, two days ago, they were like, well, they keep moving the wards. First, I was supposed to be voting at Kim and Ford and Museum and they keep moving it around, so people are confused. They don't know where to vote and this is a problem. We need to make it easier for people to vote. We can't just have three voting locations in Ward One. We need to have more voting locations all throughout all the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Calucci, you have one minute for your closing statement.
I want to thank you guys for having us tonight and, uh, I want you folks to know, I'm their fire. I won't let you down. I appreciate your vote, God bless you guys and thank you.
Meggi Madre, one minute.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming. One minute is really not enough time. What I'm telling you is that I want to be, like, I'm an attorney, so I'm going to bring that to the table. And I want to be able to not be one of those councillors that just says, yes, 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 yes. I want to ask the questions. Well, why? Why is this happening? Why are you doing that? Um, that's the kind of councillor that we need to have. The council, I want to work with other city councils and make real change happen in Lynn. In order to have that happen, we need a shakeup. We need a whole bunch of new people. So, please go out and vote for new people, because that is what we need. Um, we're not going to have change until we have new people. I'm talking about the young adults, like my son who will be voting for me for the first time. Like, it's so amazing, like, look, oh, I just need to vote for your son, like, how exciting. And then he will be a voter for, for, for his life, because it's that important. Please stress how important it is to vote. Please vote, please vote for new people, vote for change, just read. Like, you know, I will be somebody who's going to be responsive and return your calls. That is what I promise you. I don't have all the answers, but I will do the research and return and get back to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, folks, for representing Ward Four. Thank you very much. Your Ward Five City Councillor is Diane Chakudis. And a challenger would be Sandra Suarez.
No challenger. That's an old list.
Okay, again, that's an old list. For people that don't know, Diane Chakudis is the Ward Five Councillor and that is unopposed. Ward Six is Fred Hogan, he too is unopposed. And Fred did send his regrets as well, he did want to be here this evening. Ward Seven is Jay Walsh. Ward Seven also is unopposed. So, now we're going to Councillors at Large. At Large. We're going to start with Jose Encarnacion and Brian Field. And let me just say that, uh, at Count, at Large Councillor, Buzzy Barton did send his regrets as well. He has, um, some illness in his family, so he would not be able to make it this evening. Okay, we're going to start with, uh, Mr. Encarnacion. Identify yourself, the position you are running for and why you run for that position.
My name is Jose Encarnacion. I'm running for city council at large. First of all, thank you to CMCC for having us today. I am the seventh of 13 great brothers and sisters, they all live in Lynn. I, we've been here more than 30 years. We're, it's a hard-working family. My family owns three businesses in the heart of Lynn, of downtown Lynn. I'm married with six children. Uh, they all, some of them are already graduated from, graduated from college. I, I graduated myself from, um, University of Massachusetts, Boston. I've been working in public service. That's my passion, helping and serving people. And that's why I am respectfully asking for one of your vote, one of your four votes. I respectfully, respectfully asking for one of your four votes. And why I'm running? I'm running because I'm, I am committed to this, our city, to its residents and to make the local government work better for everyone. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Field, identify yourself, the office you're running for, whether you're an incumbent or a challenger.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for joining with us this evening. I can see the smiles through the masks. Everybody's smiling with their eyes now. I would like to thank the CMCC for hosting this event. Again, like every candidate has said, it takes a lot of effort to put these, uh, programs together for us to, to reach out. together for us, to reach out to you and for you to reach out to us with these important issues that face all of us. My name's Brian Field. This is my second term on the City Council. I was elected in 2017. In 2017, it wasn't roses getting into the council. It was a tough time for the city. We were facing a $14.5 million deficit and we had to make tough decisions. And that's how I began my career in the City Council. For the past 25 years, I've been serving as a funeral director at the Solomini Funeral Home and have been serving the community faithfully, day and night, responding to families in certainly challenging times for them. And I think that's what has kind of built my foundation along with my parents, my grandparents, my upbringing. I was fortunate enough to be, to have good leadership in my family, to learn from them, have great role models. And that's what I want to be, to my children and to other people in the community. I volunteer as a coach, Little League Soccer, different organizations throughout the city. That's what I've done so far. I participate in different programs. I've sponsored a number of programs throughout the city, so a lot of these faces here tonight are familiar to me. Because it's not just about me, it's not just about the candidates here, it's about all of you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Encarnacion. Being an at-large counselor, what do you think is the most pressing issue facing the city of Lynn? And how would you rectify that as an at-large counselor?
Thank you for the question. I think the most pressing issue right now is affordable housing. If I get elected as a counselor, I can promise you that I will be working hard and together with other elected officials to make the affordable housing more equal. Because with the family, hard-working family today making $3,000 a month, it's not possible that they can pay for $2,000 apartment. So I will be working hard with other elected officials to make, inclusionary zoning is one of the things in the platform, one of the issues in the platform. And I will push to include 15% to 25% of those units, of those big buildings they are building here in the city of Lynn, that they need to be reserved for low-income families. And I would, and I'm also in favor of the Lynn housing plan. Thank you.
Councilor Field, same question. What's the most pressing issue facing the city of Lynn as an at-large counselor? How would you rectify that issue?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. I know it's really hard to single it down to one pressing issue because there are so many that are facing our city, whether you look at infrastructure or schools. You look at infrastructure for roads, you look at infrastructure for sidewalks, and that's a lot of the calls that we get. We listened to the school committee earlier, talk about the overcrowding in schools. 50% of our schools in the city are over 100 years old and we need to get into a program where we can rebuild those schools for those kids. We need to work well with our state delegation and our federal delegation to be able to bring money into the city. And that's what I've done, and that's what my colleagues have done on the council, to help assist in that one particular instance. Other issues we talk about later, healthcare, access to housing. It always falls into that access word or infrastructure. It falls under that umbrella. Whether it's access to opportunity, we saw that during the pandemic. Access to good-paying jobs, access to housing. Under the infrastructure with roads, with schools, with city buildings, fire stations all around the city, that it needs money. Starting out with the deficit, again, three and a half years ago, we're just recovering from that. Our bond rating was just increased. We've made those tough decisions. I've been part of those tough decisions. And that's why I'm running again for reelection, so I can continue the growth that we've made over the past few years in the city and make it for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Encarnacion, you have one minute for your closing statement.
The city of Lynn is very diverse and we can see that diversity here tonight. So we need to see that diversity at the city hall as well. According to the census, the 2020 census, 34% of the population of Lynn are white. The rest are us, the minorities and Latinos and so many languages are here. So the city hall need to reflect what the city is like. So I'm humbly asking for one of your four votes to make it happen, to make Lynn what it's really like, a diverse city. And to work with you. I promise that when I get elected, my vote never change. And I've been working with you, I will be listening to every single one of you. One of my proposal is that once I get elected, I will be called for meeting throughout the city with every single word, to listen, to constituents. Thank you so much.
Mr. Field, one minute for your closing statement.
Again, thank you all for being with us here tonight. I know it's a short time and to answer all the questions that you may have. I know myself and everybody running appreciate you being here. We're always available to you, incumbent or not. You know, we put ourselves out there for all of you. We put our best foot forward. The voters are going to decide who they want next Tuesday and again on November 2nd. Because I'm an incumbent, I have a record. I've shown what I believe in, what I think is important, how I listen to my constituents. Just over the past couple of years, we've listened, we have a DEI officer now to address some of those inequities in City Hall and throughout the city. I'm looking forward to serving again. I ask for your vote next Tuesday on September 14th and again on November 2nd to continue doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for voting, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Next candidate for counselor at large. Marvin Rohe, Hebleed. Brian LaPierre. Okay, we're good. All right, folks, I'm going to ask you to refrain from speaking while the candidates are making their points. There are other people in the audience who can't hear clearly, so please keep the conversation to a minimum. Okay, councilors at large. We're going to have you identify yourself, Mr. Hebleed.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marvin Hebleed. I'm running for counselor at large. I grew up here in the city. I graduated high school in 2010. I believe I'm the youngest person running for office right now. And I grew up downtown and I saw a lot of things that really affected me and my family. And I always wondered, how come nobody ever came to knock at our doors? My mama is from Haiti and she's lived downtown for close to 20 years. I don't even think any councilor has ever knocked on her door. And I started doing some research, started looking into what's going on because we were really struggling with the rent. And, you know, my sister had a bunch of health issues and it was getting real hard for us. And I remember reaching out to my council and I didn't get the response or the help that I needed. And that drove me nuts and I went, I've been on this six-year rampage now trying to wake the city up and actually get some power for us. I think right now, we look at what's happening in Lynn and what's happening, I mean, really all across the country, but what's happening in Lynn right now. We're in a really crucial moment and I think we need some action steps to really help us out. We know 80% of the city doesn't vote in local elections, 65 different languages spoken in the city. I believe each and every single counselor should have staff. And we don't have to do that with tax payer money, there's grant money to do that. You can give some of the high school kids stipends, you can give some of the seniors who are retired stipends, they can help, answer phone calls, do outreach, tell people what the hell is going on in this city. And then really just free up that time for the councilors to do more policy stuff. And I also want to see more rotating monthly meetings all across the city so that there's office hours, so that people know where to go and they can share their ideas because you're the leaders. When you vote for me or vote for a counselor, they're not your leader, you're the leader.
Thank you, Marvin. Mr. Field, identify yourself, whether you're an incumbent or a challenger.
Absolutely. Thank you, Darryl. And I am Brian LaPierre. I'm a current counselor at large, elected in 2015, started serving now in my third term in 2016. And I look back here, I guess we have an advantage as we go into the night, coming up here a little later. But you look at this word resilient, you see Vic Brady, esteemed author and a wonderful example and a mentor for a lot of people in this city, how the city was taken to the brink during COVID-19. We got sworn in January 2020 and COVID hit in March. And it took this city right to the brink, like colleagues have said. We went from $1 million in the bank in 2017. We were the laughing stock of Rivera Everett Chelsea. Now there's 28 million cash reserves in our coffers, only to be certified next month. We are a city on the move. We are taking it to new heights. I'm going to spend my opening and my closing telling you what I've done and of course, what I would like to do if I'm on and with another term. But when we talk about diversity in our workplace, we do have a good track record. Right here, this CMCC has a proud history. And thanks to Darryl and others who have saved it from the brink as well, names like Barton, Battle, Stokes, Brown, Taggart, Robinson, Reed, Smiths. You built the foundation for this city. And we will never forget the investments that you made in the community right here on Union Street. I've served with Damon on Community Development Advisory Board. My politics is all relational. It's not transactional, it's transformative. Laura Galan, an economic opportunity. Darryl Murkison, we served hiring our first DEI compliance officer, Fostina Cuevas. I have 30 seconds, but I want to go down the laundry list. Assistant Personnel Person of Color, Assistant IST Director now, Person of Color, on the last term, Food and Security Director, Norris Guskow, Person of Color. Our new Lynn Council on Aging, the first one we've ever had, Chris Gomez, Person of Color, DEI Officer Cuevas, Fire Chief Steve Archer, our Superintendent, Dr. Tottwiler. We are making progress. Dozens of community advocates being appointed to boards across the city. I'm proud of our record, we're going to keep fighting for more, we're not done yet.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Mr. Hebleed, in your view, what is the most pressing issue facing the city of Lynn and what would you do as an at-large counselor to rectify that issue?
The most pressing issue in our city is the fact that people are having a difficult time affording where they live. And, you know, one of the things that's happening with this gentrification is we're always asking the same group of people to move, never anybody else. We're the most diverse city in the North Shore and it seems to be, we're the ones that are being gentrified and pushed out of our city. Right now, I mean, you'll hear from other folks that they'll say, there's nothing you can do in the short term to fight that. I think that's BS. There's a lot that we can do and we really need to open up the lines of communication in the city. When you have 80% of the city now voting, that means that 80% of the people in the city don't have a say. The reason we're struggling this way is because we're disempowered. We have a small group of people who make the decisions for everybody else and they don't look like you and I, don't speak the languages, don't have the same culture. So for the housing issue, I want to pass inclusionary zoning. I want to get community benefits agreements. We voted a couple of years ago to give this building downtown a $2.5 million tax rate. We never got one and I'm not entirely sure what we got in return. And we really also, again, that staff idea that I talked about earlier, it's not a sexy idea, but it really will free up the councilor's time to go look for more grants, to go look for more businesses to come into the city to pay into the tax base so that our property taxes are not going up and our rents are not going up. Thank you.
Brian?
Most pressing concern? I would turn my attention in the next term to capital investment, capital improvements in our city. We need to make sure that we have strong infrastructure in West Lynn to prevent the flooding that's happening every single storm. There's no such thing of a 100-year storm any longer. It's seasonal, it's monthly, it's constant. We have councilors who are going in and with pumps helping people in their basements. We're understaffed. We need to invest in a CSO project for West Lynn like we did 25 years ago for East Lynn. There should not be a difference in our city. That's infrastructure. A new school, the Marshall Middle School, it's one of my saddest days, March 21st of 2017, when this community voted two to one to not build the new middle, two new middle schools in West Lynn and East Lynn. We need to do better. We need to find a better site that works for the community and we need to take the state's money and build the first-class, state-of-the-art educational facility for our children, yours and mine. Additionally, we are going to need a senior center yesterday. It's time to invest in our seniors. I am proud to sponsor the largest caller increase, cost of living adjustment for our seniors living on a fixed income. We raised that by 3% in an unbelievable COVID situation last year. We've got to take care of folks living on fixed income. That's why I'm all for affordable housing. I'm for the planned-in housing we just passed it Tuesday night. It has inclusionary zoning in it, it has affordability in it. What we've been doing besides that plan the last term, no one seems to be talking about, is hundreds and hundreds of units that are affordable for seniors, veterans, low-income folks. We are doing the work that we hear from all of you. And I will continue, I think I have some more time, but I will continue in my closing, 30 seconds, I'm going to keep going. I have spearheaded the DEI hiring with a great panel of screener, we're very proud of that. We want that on the school side as well. No reason why our Lynn schools should not have a diversity equity inclusion officer to counterpart the city side. We also, I spearheaded the Black Lives Matter on your own late April, taking off an agenda that wasn't on a new business and we got it finally on the street this July. I'm proud of that work. And we also did $500,000 on the alert in the man's budget, we passed that, which is an anti-crisis response team for folks that call the police, but they don't need police showing up at their door. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think we're done for this segment. Marvin, did you close your statement? Oh, my apologies. Just want to get some more attention, want to get some more attention. All right, Mr. Hebleed, your closing statement.
So the theme of my campaign is really improving the city services, but it's about plugging each and every single one of you in. We are really, right now, in a crucial moment. If you vote for the same old, you're going to get the same old. We do not have time to waste. We are losing people every day, moving down south, losing talent, losing young people who want to grow up here in this city but won't and can't because they can't afford it. I'm asking all of you to take a chance, to try something new. And I'm not here just running for no reason. I've built the experience. I work in constituent services. I've been out here doing the work. You've seen me at your doors and I'm influencing policy whether I'm in this seat or not. But I know one thing, that when I get elected, I'm not going to do it alone. And that I have a plan to plug each and every single one of you in because it's we, the people that make this city. We are the ones that know what's best for our lives and we deserve more say when that goes on in the city.
All right, thank you very much, Marvin. And Brian, thank you for that.
Thank you, Darryl, and thank you to CMCC and AALC for hosting us this evening. I'll take my minute and just say, you know, in this race, there's a lot of good candidates. I'm going to be your fourth best choice, if you will. It's one out of four. I've had a very good track record of getting the job done for all of you. I answer my calls, I check my email constantly, I get my back to text message on Facebook Messenger and the like on Facebook. We run our campaign and it's very personal. And I try to do the best I can on your behalf, depending on what issue you need from me. And I will continue to do that. I am not the same old. I am still passionate. I have a lot of gas in the tank, folks. I have a lot of energy and I am willing to go to work and the best job that I have. You could not believe that COVID hit us what it did. It hit your household, it hit the Lynn City Council as well. And we were able to be resilient and we bounced back. Not only did we bounce back, but we pushed a social justice agenda that needed to be done with body cams on our Lynn police, keeping everyone accountable, keeping everyone safe. We have done the work and I really, 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 really respect. And I really, 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 really respectfully ask for one of your four votes to return me back. The work is not done yet, September fourteenth, and again, November second. Thank you.
Thank you both of you. Our last two candidates for councillor-at-large, Nicole McLean and Hong Nett. Okay, we're going to start with, um... Nicole.
Hello, everybody, my name is Nicole McLean, and I'm running for councillor-at-large on the city of Linn. I was born and raised in this city. I grew up in Marion Gardens. I graduated from Linn Tech High School. And the reason why I'm running for councillor-at-large is because I want to continue to be a part of the solution. I've done a lot of work with the community in twenty twenty as a result of racial unrest. I've done a lot of work with food insecurity as well during COVID as well. And I want to continue to be a part of that. I am part of the Linn Racial Justice Team that helped to bring body cameras to the Linn Police Department. I'm also a part of the hiring of our first diversity, equity, inclusion officer. We fought for those things. We brought those things to the city council, and that's why they are able to boast about them now, because us as community members brought those things to the forefront. And now they can say what they did as a result of what we showed them that we needed. So I think that, you know, you need to give me one of your four votes because I want to continue to be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Hong, identify yourself, the office you're running for, whether or not you're an incumbent or a challenger.
I think I cannot take my mask off because I'm vaccinated. Hi, everyone, my name is Hong Nett, for those who don't know me. I'm a city councillor-at-large, and I just want to say that I'm honored to have the opportunity to serve this city for the past ten years and to work alongside you all to improve our city. And our city has come a long way because of us, and we work together really well. And I'm also very pleased to say that we have accomplished together, like we have brought a lot of businesses to our city. And to now talk is doing much better. And we also brought the market basket to our city. During my term, we also have a new MCA and martial school. So all these accomplishments that we have done together, and I'm proud to be a part of it. And I want, the reason I'm running for reelection because I want to continue to make, to improve our city, make sure we all live happily in this city. And I also have two issues I want to work on if I get re-elected. I want to make sure I will continue to work with the city so we can hire more diverse, qualified diverse population, because twenty-five percent should be, should be a good number. So even though we already have a lot of good diverse population working in the city, but we still need more. So I will continue to push for that for my next term. And I already spoken with the law department, the personnel department, and the mayor, and they all agree that that's what we should have. And I don't think that for senior issue, and I know that for those who live on a fixed income, we need to work with the state delegation and to, I just want them to make sure they have enough money to enjoy themselves. And so who are the, I mean, so, sorry.
Well, as you can see, the city's facing a multitude of issues. But we're asking at this point, if you choose one, if you had to, the most pressing issue that's facing the city of Linn as a citywide at-large councillor, what would you do to rectify that particular issue? Ms. McLean?
Okay, so I do know affordable housing is pressing. And if you look at the Housing Linn Plan, you'll see my name on it because I had started off being a part of the steering committee for that, for that plan. And that plan does speak to what we need as far as housing. So if you can Google Housing Linn, you can look at the plan yourself and you'll see. But I'm going to focus on communication in our city. I feel like no one in our city really knows what is going on. Did anybody know those developments were going up? Did anybody know that there was, you know, taxes was being raised? Does anybody know that there's a voting, that this is a voting season right now and things are going on? Like, people just don't know. So I would like to improve on, and find solutions that would improve the city's website and make it a user-friendly platform where residents can easily become informed of decisions being made, resources available, and activities being provided. So that's one of my, one of my key goals on my platform is to really just expand communication and find solutions so that people can really engage in the city. Because no one knows what's going on in this time that we do, so that we can, we all care. That's why we're here today, because we care and we want to know what's going on in our city, and we want to be a part of the solution. So I think that just having some more, some better communication is my, is one of my number-one priorities.
The most pressing thing that in the structure, we need that, like my colleague Brian LaPierre already mentioned. But I want to see a bear because every time I have storms, it's always a wave come to the Linn, I mean, Linn shore. And businesses don't want to come to our city when the system like that. So I will, I will work with the state delegation and even the federal government to get some funding so we can build a bear so that when the waves come, so it won't, it won't come to our Linn shore. And also, I would like to see an overpass. We have one, that's not enough. So we have, I want to see more overpasses so that the people can cross safely instead of running across the Linnway. And I, I don't think that that's, that's... So yeah, we, we all agree with that, and we will work on it. So I see that it's most important because when we have overpasses and people will go shop at Walmart or somewhere, looking for car dealers or whatever, so it's easy for all of us so that maybe we don't have to worry about getting hit by a car because it's always pretty dark in the Linnway. So, and I'm, I'm very excited about that, and that's how I see that we're going to work on it. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. McLean, you have one minute for your closing statement to inform everybody why you should be one of their four city councillors-at-large.
Thank you to the CMCC for having this forum tonight and to the AALC as well. I want to give you my information. You can find me on Instagram and Facebook at Nicole for Linn. My email is nicoleforlin@gmail.com if you need to reach out to me. And the reason why, again, that I should get one of your four votes is because I am solution-oriented. I will do the research, I will find ways for grants, I will look for whatever it is that we need and collaborate with whoever it is that we need to collaborate with so that we can move forward and make progress in this city. So as I said, I've been a part of the solutions already, the Housing Linn Plan, I was a part of. Cameras for the Police Department, I was a part of. Food insecurity, I helped deliver food during COVID to each, to families as well. The unarmed crisis response team, I am currently a part of that happening right now. I am part of, like, a part of a lot of the solutions that are happening in this city. And with one of your four votes, I can continue to be a powerhouse the way that I've been. So, thank you.
Okay, you have, you have one minute for your closing statement why you should remain one of the four city councillors-at-large.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Darren, thank you, CM for organizing this. I think I'm a qualified candidate to be re-elected because every time I got elected, I see the city have changed a lot. So many diverse candidates running for office. Before I got elected, before with Bussie Barton, there was no, we didn't have any diverse candidate because we were afraid. But after I got elected, I created a Human Rights Commission to make it equal. So everyone has an equal, can equal with job, housing, even run for offices. So, so I'm very pleased with my record. And I, I respectfully ask to give me one of your four votes again so I can continue to work for all of us. So we all deserve to be in this city together. And we want to build this city together as a team, as a family. And I'm very passionate about it. And for the senior, I want to close up. So I have spoken with the state representative and the housing authorities. So they all agree that so we should have the senior who look under the public lights. Thank you.
All right, thank you to you both. And that concludes the candidates for city councillors-at-large, at-large. Next, we have three candidates for the open position of Mayor of the city of Linn. Before we get into them, let me just say briefly, councillors-at-large are very important city councillors. Like I stated before, those are the people that are next in line to be mayor. They're working on budgets, they're working on all the things that a mayor will work on. All right, if they had a line of succession, they would go down that line. City councillor, president, at-large, that would be one of your top leaders. So again, there are four positions for at-large for people that don't know it. And also, there are seven people running for those four positions. So if you have an opportunity, you've met them, to give it some thought, all right? So thank you to all those candidates. Now, I'd like to ask the candidates for mayor to come forward. Darren Seer, Mike Satterwhite, Jared Nicholson. I think there's a minor adjustment because there are three candidates for mayor. I'm going to move this table back a little bit. Darren, just hold one second, please. All right, is Elizabeth Theodore here? Someone from Ward Three? Yes, no? No, there's a person that was running for Ward Three, they just took a note to me that... I don't see that. No. Harry Clemmick. Okay, we're going to continue. But I do believe in giving everybody an opportunity. And that's what happens far too many times when there are people looking to try to make some change or have a voice in something, they're shut down by protocol. So we were not going to do that. If she were here this evening, I would allow her to speak. But we move on. Okay, we're going to go in alphabetical order. Mr. Seer?
Thank you, Darren.
Identify yourself, the office you are running for, whether or not you're an incumbent or a challenger, and why you are running for that position.
My name is Darren Seer, I'm running for candidate for mayor of our great city of Linn. I've lived here for sixty-two years, my entire life. I can go back five generations on my mother's side and four generations on my wife's side. I've been invested in the city, we chose to live here. Both my sons graduated from English High School, my wife graduated from classical, and I graduated from Linn Tech, which to me is the greatest school in the city. I've been a Little League coach, a soccer coach. I've been on the PTA at Avon School, as well as Marshall. Part of the alumni of Linn Tech. Sat on my church council. I guess basically what I'm saying is I've always been involved in the city, I've always contributed. I worked for Mayor McManus back in the nineties when Mr. Barton and Ms. Barton came in with Mayor McManus. I was sitting here tonight in the CMCC because of those three people. I was part of that. Been a city councillor for sixteen years, council president for the last five and a half. As Brian said earlier, we've made a lot of accomplishments in the city. We faced every single challenge that we, that's come before us. We've had some extremely tough years. Back in two thousand eight, we had the housing market crash, all the way to the COVID. We've had numerous debilitating storms in the city of Linn. Whether they've been floods, hurricanes, or snowstorms. We've answered the call every single time. Last year, every single day, we were providing over a thousand boxes of food for not just seniors in the city, but an additional five hundred every single day for people in need throughout the city. Thank you.
All right, Jared Nicholson, identify yourself, position you're running for, whether or not you're an incumbent or a challenger.
My name is Jared Nicholson, and I am running for mayor. I'm running to help with the recovery from COVID and to push for growth that benefits the whole city, that includes all of us. I'm currently in my third term in the Linn School Committee. I'm also a dad to my young son, Henry, who's almost two. And I'm a husband to my wife, Catherine, who's a nurse midwife at Mass General. My day job, I'm a law professor at Northeastern. I got started in Linn founding a legal aid practice right up the street here on Union Street at Northeast Legal Aid that provide free legal help to entrepreneurs and small businesses in support of community growth. And from the beginning, I saw the importance of the connection between education and economic development to the city's future. And I was elected to the school committee six years ago. I'm excited that in this race for mayor, I'm able to draw on the deep experience that I have in education, having served on the school committee, I've worked in higher education, as well as the deep experience I have on city issues like housing, economic development, from my work as a lawyer and a law professor. I'm running for mayor to provide leadership for inclusive growth. And I believe I have the skills and experience to both create opportunities for growth and to make sure that those opportunities are inclusive. I just want to say thank you so much to the CMCC for this opportunity to connect this evening to all of you for being here. My website is jarednickelson.org. We'll have a chance to chat briefly this evening, but I would definitely encourage you to please reach out with any other questions. Would love hearing from you, and would really appreciate your support on Tuesday and in November. Thank you so much.
Mike Satterwhite, introduce yourself, the office you're running for, whether or not you're an incumbent or a challenger.
Thank you, Daryl. My name is Michael Satterwhite, and I'm running for mayor for the city of Linn. I'm a lifelong Linn resident, so is my, my family has foundations here. My dad lives here, my stepmom lives here, my grandmother lives here. I have aunts, uncles, I'm vested in this community. The community is important to me, my family is important to me, your family is important to me. When I first started to run for mayor, we had two men of color that were running. You only see one now. And Keith Lee dropped off... And Keith Lee dropped off his experiences here in the city. But I continued on running for mayor because of my experiences here in the city. I've experienced poverty, I've experienced housing instability, I experienced drug and mental health issues. I've experienced all the things that we have issues with in our city. And I think people are tired of people saying, "Oh, I read this statistics" or "I read this particular article and now I know it all." You don't. You have to live through it, you have to get through it in order to understand it. It's vital. You don't have to be a law professor to know this stuff. It's important to have someone that's lived the things that our city is facing. At sixteen, I suffered homelessness. By the time I was twenty-one, I bought my first house. I finished my law degree in under five years. Not because I had handouts, but because I'm a hard worker. And a lot of us here in the city are hard workers and we don't see a return on our investment. It's something that needs to change. The dirty politics, the business as usual, needs to stop. You've seen the pushback I got just being a black man running for mayor. And it needs to end now. I bring my background, my education, and my experience as being a small business owner for the past fifteen years, serving on the school committee for the past four years. I have the lived experiences that the city needs today. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Council Seer. Now, we know that there are many different issues that are facing the city of Lynn. We've asked people to identify the most pressing issues facing them for the particular office they're running for. You are running for the office of mayor of the city of Lynn, our next leader. And it's a great deal of responsibility, it's an absolute awesome responsibility being mayor of the city of Lynn. So we're going to take a little latitude here. And instead of having you identify just one, we would like you to identify three of the top issues that are facing the city of Lynn and how you would rectify those as the mayor of the city of Lynn. Do you want to kick it up a minute or keep it to... Kick it up a minute? We'll take it as it comes. If he needs to go on, then we'll go on, all right?
We could sit here all night and have this...
Suck a sign up.
I mean, there are so many...
I'll determine. All right, Darren, you have the floor.
Thank you, Darren. There are so many issues that face all of us. I mean, no matter where you go in the city, every neighborhood has its issues, every culture, religion, church, I mean, it's just, it's so widespread. But to me, the number one thing, in all honesty, is schools. Our buildings are so deplorable, fourteen of them are over a hundred years old. We need to replace them, we have to come up with a plan, we have to work with the MSBA to come up with that plan. We have to build what I call cluster schools in the city. For students that are going to elementary school, we have twenty-eight schools. It doesn't make sense for us to be maintaining all these schools. It's twenty-eight boilers, twenty-eight roofs. It's unbelievable the condition and the environment that our kids are going to school. Our teachers are teaching it. Perfect example is Marshall Middle School. One of the first things that happened when I became councillor was the need for a new school in Ward Three in East Lynn for a middle school. It was called Eastern Junior High when I went there. It was like a reform school. And it was exactly the same thirty years later for the kids that were going there. So my biggest goal in the beginning of becoming a ward councillor was to get a new school on that side of the city in our ward. We accomplished that. And the most amazing thing, it was like a miracle overnight. Kids left school at the beginning of April vacation and when they came back, they went into the new school. Overnight, it was like a transformation. Every single one of those kids enjoyed coming to school. What was really amazing, teachers enjoyed teaching again. It was a building where sixth graders, by the time they were going into the seventh grade, were already making up their minds what they wanted to do. You have music labs that are there. And I mean, I just saw that I only have one minute. I could touch on housing is another big thing. We have to break the cycle of poverty in the city of Lynn and the way to do that is by creating jobs. And I really look at the future industry of the city of Lynn is through development. And development, I call positive development so that we can all benefit from it. We have a senior population of over six thousand people that need housing. There are so many families in the city that don't even qualify for affordable housing because they're making less than what the AMI is. There are families of four people that are making less than forty-five thousand dollars a year. We're obligated as a city to help them. I know we just approved the housing production plan, I didn't vote for it.
Okay.
My time is up.
Okay, hold one second. All right, Darren, you've identified two, education and housing, what would be your third issue?
Pardon, Darren.
What would be your third issue of concern in the city as the mayor? Your top three, you've chosen housing and education thus far, is one more, what would you choose?
So because of what's been going on in our country, in Washington, it's created such a division in our country, including our city, it's trickled all the way down. Ten years ago, I never looked at a person's color of their skin or where they were from. I had so many friends, I grew up here in the city, it's the most diversified city in the whole wide world. But in the last year, year and a half, a lot of things have come to light. And there's a person in this room who really enlightened me, he's sitting behind me. He gave me what it was like for him growing up as a black man in the city of Lynn. It changed my whole perspective as to the way, not just that I look at people of color, but everybody. So everybody, as I said earlier, has their own issues and their own problems. We have to come together as a city. I always say I come from the biggest family in the whole wide world. Not because my wife has eleven brothers and sisters and that I have something like seventy-four nephews and nieces. I come from a city of a hundred thousand plus people. That's my family. If I'm the mayor, I represent everyone, even if I don't agree with you. And I look at it that we all have, you know, different issues and different things in our lives. Somebody's got to be a leader and bring us all back together, get everybody to sit at the table and talk. As mayor, even if we don't agree, I still would represent you. We got to open the door again. My door as council president has always been open to anybody that wants to come in there and sit down and talk. Even if we don't agree, as I said, we will work out the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Jared, identify three issues that are pressing and how would you rectify those as mayor of the city of Lynn?
Great, yes, thank you. So I'll start with the state of our schools, the physical state of our schools that need for new buildings. It's absolutely a top priority and it's two issues really in one from the school's perspective. The first is that our schools are overcrowded and class sizes are too high. That's a challenge for the students, it's a challenge for the teachers, it's a challenge for the professionals that are serving the classroom, the people we're hiring trying to meet needs outside the classroom. The buildings just aren't big enough to contain the work that we want to do with them. And then there's a separate issue that the conditions of the building are not acceptable. Half our buildings are over a hundred years old and they're just not suitable learning environments for us to fulfill our promise of public education for all. And so we absolutely need to reform the mass school building, school construction formula. We had a very successful effort for the state to reform the way it pays for education year to year. And we need a similar effort to reform the way the state builds new schools. And the city of Lynn needs to play a leadership role in that movement. The second issue that I want to talk about is housing, the cost of housing, the need to create opportunities for affordable housing. Lynn is an amazing city. And I think all of us here believe in the strengths that we have in Lynn. And one of its core strengths is the city's diversity. Rising housing costs are a threat to the city's diversity. We risk pushing the people out who created this opportunity in the first place. If we don't do something about skyrocketing rents, if we don't create opportunities for people who are starting out in life, who want to come back to the city, to buy a home. This is the work that the Housing Lynn Plan seeks to address. It's just a starting point, it's just a plan, next will come the policy. But that's the right place to start, which is why I'm glad that the council approved it. I served on the steering committee of the Housing Lynn Plan as well, along with Nicole, as you mentioned earlier. And that's the right place to start. The third issue that I'll bring up is the need for infrastructure investment. We are going to have a once-in-a-generation opportunity over the coming years to improve our city's infrastructure with the money that's coming from the state and federal government. We need to be ready. We need to be ready to put our best foot forward to fix the problems that we all know, we see every day. The streets, the sidewalks, walking around the city, accessibility of, for people who are needing to walk around. This is a top priority with the streets and the sidewalks. And that's just the beginning of infrastructure, the city's buildings and equipment, public safety buildings, the school buildings, like I mentioned, equipment that helps improve city services, like picking up trash and litter. The need for a new senior center, that's an infrastructure need. The sewer upgrades that we expect to be making to address the flooding problems that we're having. The sewer, the work that we need to do to address the fact that King's Beach is polluted. These are infrastructure issues. And we need to be able to put our best foot forward, to go out and put the team together to make those improvements. And we need to do it in a way that's inclusive, that gets input from people, from the community, to let them know that these opportunities are coming and to hear from them what their needs are. And this is something the city needs to do better by making it easier to get involved. Language access is a part of that. I speak Spanish, which I think is helpful, has been helpful in my work with Spanish-speaking constituents, but that's just one of many languages that's spoken in the city. Technology is a part of that as well. When we were talking about infrastructure, the city's website, that's digital infrastructure. If our city hall is the city's physical presence in the community, we want to talk to the city, you know where to go, you walk down to city hall. The city's website is the digital presence in the community. And it needs to be improved if we want to be able to draw people in, if we want to be able to really share information so that people can navigate the issues that they're having and find where to go. And that's an investment that's required. And that's something that we need to prioritize. And we're going to have the opportunity to do it if we're organized, if we're inclusive, if we're thoughtful about it, if we plan ahead and work with our state and federal partners to make the most of this opportunity. Thank you so much.
All right, Mike, you have identified three specific issues facing the city of Lynn as mayor and how would you rectify them?
In the item today, they called me the candidate for change. So I'm going to go with the four that I always talk about, but it's going to be very quick. So my platform is pretty simple and it's going to be my everyday platform. We have to address affordability, accessibility, activities, and public safety here in the city every single day. Anything that's before us has to address those things. And I'm talking about not just addressing it for some people in the city, but all. Every resident, every ward, every business. That's what I say every day and I mean it. We're talking about affordability. I'm not just talking about Section Eight and vouchers, I'm talking about the ability to be able to afford to live here. And it hasn't been just six years because eight years ago, we had a housing production plan that was presented to the city as well from the Lynn Housing Authority because we had the same issue that we have today. If you lived here and experienced it, you would know. And it's important for the next mayor of this city to have that experience. I'm talking about the knowledge of the city and the things that we've had to face. It's vital. So affordability is vital. I'm talking about the ability for you to be able to afford your mortgage with the ever-growing property taxes. And it's just, it's becoming outrageous. So what, your house is worth a million dollars? You don't realize that until you sell it. So let's talk about how it's impacting you now. And there are different programs that I've spoken about, about helping seniors with their property taxes. There are programs around the country that allow you to defer your property taxes until you pass away or the house is sold. And that allows for people to be able to afford and live in the place that they call home. Not taking their house and selling it and putting them in senior housing, letting them live in the place that they're comfortable with. I'm talking about accessibility. Accessibility is important to me. I'm talking about accessibility to good education, good employment. These are things that we're not really, we're getting a hundred and eighty million dollars in stimulus money over the next five years from the federal government. We need someone that's going to advocate for the allocation of that money to impact every resident, every business, and every ward. We can't be in the business of picking winners and losers in the city anymore. It's not fair. We can't allow politics to get in between those things. So accessibility is vital, accessibility is access. How many of you feel like you have access to the people that you elect into office? Not many, we need to fix that. That's a bridge that needs to be fixed. I'm a litigator, an attorney, I advocate. If something's wrong, I'm going to say it's wrong, but I'm also a mediator and a conciliator. I know how to bring people together and come to resolutions. I have that experience. It's vital for the next leader to have that as well. I'm talking about activities. My great-granddaddy used to take me fishing at Flex Pond. My grandmother used to take me, have picnics on the commons. We used to be able to do things. We don't have activities anymore. And we see what happens with that. The Shannon Collaborative just did an analysis in Lynn and around the state last year. And they found that eighty-seven percent of our youth are either in middle or high risk of joining a gang or doing risky behavior because our poverty rate is double the state's average. It's because the economic disadvantage in our city is double the average. Our unemployment is four percent over the state average. Those things have a direct impact on our kids. We have to do better. And adult education needs to be in the forefront here in our city. We need to train our adults for the middle skilled jobs that are out there that pay over seventy thousand dollars a year. You heard Mr. Seer? We're talking about families of four living on forty-five thousand dollars? That's not possible. And we need to have a safe city. It's vital for us to feel safe in our city. And our public emergency services, public safety officers, fire, they need to be public-facing, community-facing. It's vital, we need to build trust. And that's what I bring to the table. Affordability, accessibility, activities, public safety, every business, every resident, every ward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, for that. We're going to have one minute for closing statements. I'm going to start with Darren Seer.
Thank you, Darren.
One minute to tell your constituents here why you should be the next mayor of the city of Lynn.
So a lot of the things that I mentioned and a lot of the other councillors have mentioned, it's experience. My experience of living here in the city, my experience of facing every single challenge. Back four and a half years ago, we were looking at going into the possibility of receivership with over an eleven million dollar deficit. I sat with the mayor for weeks at a time, or days at a time, for weeks, I'm sorry. And we found a way to come up with that money and not lay one person off. We borrowed fourteen million dollars and we've already paid back seven and a half million. We have been building affordable housing, we are fixing our infrastructure on our roads. But the real thing that we have to tackle is the schools, and I understand that. I got Marshall School built. It's a state-of-the-art school. All of our kids deserve, no matter where they live in the city... All of our kids deserve, no matter where they live in the city, the same equal education as the kids living in that new school. Please remember to vote for me on September fourteenth. Thank you.
Again, I'm Jared Nicholson. I'm running to provide leadership for inclusive growth. That's about better schools, including building new schools, including providing more services to our English learners, continuing the progress that we're making, addressing students' social, emotional needs, their needs outside the classroom. It's about better housing, including addressing the cost of housing and giving the people here now the chance to stay and benefit from the growth that we hope is coming. It's about better jobs and supporting small local businesses as a strategy for inclusive growth and building pathways for residents to find skills for higher-paying jobs. It's about better infrastructure, which we talked about earlier, the roads, the sidewalks, the buildings. And it's about more peace in the community. Because peace is a precondition for opportunity. I'm running for mayor to provide the forward-thinking leadership that we need in this moment to recover and grow together. Thank you.
I'm Michael Satterwhite. I'm running for mayor for the city of Lynn. And that man back there is my father, Melvin Satterwhite. If you wanted to say hi to him. I'll just tell you quickly. I went to seven different schools here in the city. I moved seven different times before I was twelve years old. I faced housing instability. I faced poverty. What I had was a stable father and a stepmom, and it's because of him that I'm at where I'm at. And that's the same stability that I will bring to the city. A leader that understands, that can relate, and can bring stability and long-term plans for the city. That's what allows me to be successful in my fifteen-year as being a business owner. I can relate to people. I can inspire our youth, which is very vital. The next mayor is the chair of the school committee, which is going to drastically change the future of this city. We need to make this choice right. It's vital. So I will bring you, again, someone that you can call and talk to. I can bring you someone with lived experiences. I ask for your vote on September fourteenth. Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, for all of that. Before I let you go, I just want to speak to the crowd just a little bit here. Again, my name is Darryl Murkison, and I thank each and every one of you for coming out and just taking part in the political process yourselves. The objective for this gathering this evening is to educate people about voter education, voter information, so you can make a very informed decision when you are bringing forth your next elected official. You have that choice. You have that choice. We have so many complaints about our quality of life within this city, anywhere you may live as the year goes on. But this is the time when you can make a difference. You can make a change. If you're unhappy with what your conditions are right now, no matter what it may be, you've heard these people mention many different issues that are involved in the city. It could be housing. It could be education. There was some mention of public safety. It could be the cleanliness of the city. Many different things. The infrastructure, the tax base. Who's happy with being able to have to pay the trash tax and a trash bill right now? We never had that before, but now we do. All right? So you may or may not be happy with that. But this is the time that you can make a difference. Don't wait and say, oh, when it's election time, I'm going to vote you out. Guess what? It's election time. It's election time, right now. So we need people to come out and vote. You're here this evening, but there's many of us that are not, all right? So tell your friends, your family, your associates, anyone you know that it's important for them to come out and vote, all right? And the numbers we see right here, and all these politicians understand it, there's something called an exponential factor. Each one of you represents more than yourself sitting here. You know people, they know people, they know people, and they know people that can affect this election, all right? So please, reach out to your friends, your associates, anyone you're associated with, and let them know what you heard here this evening so they can make an informed decision. These gentlemen told you who they are. They gave you their background. They told you why they're running, all right? But this is only preliminary. There's going to be a final that's coming up. We're going to hold another candidate tonight, and we're going to be having some more in-depth questions about public safety, about the police, about an unawed crisis response team, about a civilian review board. All those questions will be coming up. About mask mandates in school, about going forward with your children's education, the cleanliness of school, and the elimination of the two Ls. Anyone that lives here knows that, all right? If you look at Market Square right now in West Lynn and you look at Wyoming Square up in Ward One, this is the state difference. Why is that? Why is that? We need to address all of those things. So again, thank you for coming out this evening, and I hope to see you all for the final. Anyone have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, before we close out, we feel bad because it's getting late. It's Friday of the Friday audience question participation, but it's Friday, people want to go home. So however, we think it would be a shame if the candidates would walk out of the CMCC without knowing what was undermined other people here. There were over sixty people who showed up and ten people submitted questions. So we can't read the questions, but just to give...
Let's read the questions. We won't be able to answer them, but let's read them so we know what the concerns are. So we'll do that. We want to know what the people are concerned about and will give the people an opportunity, these elected officials, to ponder them as they need.
Take these questions home with you. While I talk very loud. What are your plans? I guess I'll talk softer. What are your plans for a day center for the homeless and other populations? They need a place to go in the day when the shelters kick them out at 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Would you consider a widespread mask mandate? How do you plan to address school overcrowding? What is your plan to allow children to attend the school in their neighborhood? Do you plan to address the relatively low high school graduation rates? Revere, Everett, Chelsea, all of these surrounding cities are progressing without exception, with the exception of Lynn. We have the same resources and move. And move. However, however, the progress is slow. There is no real revenue coming in to help with infrastructure, schools, et cetera. What is your plan to start attracting businesses in Lynn? What will you do to improve race relations and eradicate institutional racism in Lynn? With D E T being such an important topic, how do you plan on addressing the issue and making sure the burden to solve does not fall only on the people of color? How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process of Lynn? As a person with vision impairment, I want to know, what will you do to get all the walk lights that need to be fixed for blind people so they can walk across the street safely? And the last two. We'll save this one for last. What do you feel is more important? Acting in response to the will of the people or acting in the way city officials believe is the best course of action for them? And finally, this is a fun one, and candidates feel free to participate in this one. What neighborhood do you live in? And where is your favorite place to spend in the city of Lynn? I think that's a funky question. I'll repeat it. Where do you live? What ward? And when you're in the city of Lynn, where do you like to hang out? Yes, whoever would like to. Go on, bring it on. Real quick, though, just...
So I live in the same ward that I've lived in for sixty-two years. My favorite place to go is downtown Lynn.
I live by Kylie Park on Merrill Avenue, and my favorite place to go, my son loves running around Red Rock Park.
I'm Michael Satterwhite. I live in Ward One, and I bought the old Haywood Restaurant last year. And I love spending time on Suze Pond. It's amazing. Thank you.
Can you hear me? I bought my condo in West Lynn, so I live right in the hood I grew up on. I used to live on Hanover Street. I actually, I love food. I actually, I feel like I'm a big foodie in Lynn. I keep all the... It's hard to plug every one of them, but Taco Lo Pita is fine. If you've never been, I recommend it. Burritos, papousas. Also a quick little plug, I'm sorry, but Tony's Pub is great, too. They got great steak tips. And I recommend everyone try out Steak Tips in Lynn, because Lynn's where it's after food, so.
Lazy dog.
So I currently live in Ward Seven, right off of Walnut Street, over near Classical. But where I really like to spend time is actually where I grew up, in Ward Six, at my parents' house. My grandmother lives there now, ninety-two years old. And they're building that nice pathway behind my parents' house. Seeing the kids, being able to go out there and play and enjoy a public space is something to see, so that's really where I like to be. Family means a lot to me.
I'm Wayne Fanyah. I live in Ward Three. I currently live on Ingle Street. Fun fact, my house is the original Ingle School, which was built in nineteen thirty-five. Later on, it was my house was built in nineteen sixty-five. My favorite two places to go is Kinney Park and Barry Park, especially during football season. I love football. You're football.
East Lynn West Lynn, Lenny, good job. Brian Lafferty at Councilor Lodge. I live at the Old Mrs. Foster's Donuts, home of the best honey-dipped donuts the city's ever had. So I would say I like to go there. But I will say Manning Field for the track and for the sporting events and down the street to Flax Pond with my family, my wife and two boys. Thank you.
I'm Hownet. I live in West Lynn, Ward Seven, but I love the Red Rocks. Really, that's a great place. I always go there. I love the beach. I love to get some ice cream, do the swamsky. That's what I always go. Thank you.
Eric Dugan, running for school committee. I live on Cedar Brook Road in Ward One, but my favorite place to go, both my kids play basketball for Lynn Classical, so watching them play at Frazier Field is one of my favorite places to go. And then hitting Tony's afterwards for some steak tips. That's always a good time, too, so.
So I'm Tiffany Magnolia. I live on Bowler Street, which is one floor, right in the shadow of St. Pius Church. My favorite place to be in the city is actually Union Street. Where I grew up in Washington, DC, this is the most like that of any place. And there used to be a barber shop here called Tiffany's Barber Shop. And I've never seen another business with my name, so it was just a really wonderful place to walk by all the time. Plus, one of my favorite things before the pandemic to do is to take my students out to lunch. And Union Street's a wonderful place to do that.
Coco Alinson, Ward Three. I have two very important places that I love to hang out with. Red Rock, because that's where I got married. I don't have money to pay a church or whatever, so we just walked there and got married. Number two, Goldfish Pond. I'm a board member there. Like what I said, the moment I moved to Lynn, I planted every flowers. I mow every lawn, I clean. I fell off three times. It's dirty, but it's a lot of memories at Goldfish Pond.
Hi, Natasha Maggi-Madri. I live on Beacon Hill Ave in Ward Four. And one of my favorite places is Ward Four, is Red Rock Park.
My name is Jose Encarnacion. I live now near the north, well, two minutes from here, Sagamore Street. And favorite places to visit are the beach and also the public park, High Rock, High Rock Towers. And a place to eat, Rincomacorisano. They have excellent food.
Nicole McLean, running for councillor at Lodge. I live in Ward Three on Utah Ave, around the corner from Lynn English. Two of my favorite places are obviously Red Rock Park, because I love to jog, and I jog up there. Sometimes before the sun comes up, and it's beautiful to see the sunrise over there. And I also like to go for walks in the Lynn Woods as well.
Marvin E. Foley. I live over on Ward Three, but I grew up in Ward Five downtown. That's where my heart's at. And I'm usually spending time at the beach, playing basketball. So any of y'all that want it, come and get it. Especially you, Dan. And then I also love spending time in the woods. It's really peaceful there. I wish more young folks with it.
I'm Brian Field. I live on Lois Lane in Ward Seven. And my favorite place to be would probably be where my dog wants to go.
That's it? All right.